Code, I called to order a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Monday, August 19th, 2024 at 5:47 PM. Apologies for starting a little late. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting, and Trustees Hunter and Kaufman are joining us via Zoom. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Estown Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Thank you for joining us. So we will first move to the public testimony for items on the consent agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. So tonight, we have six people who left a recorded message. So we will, do we have anyone doing in-person testimony? No. Okay. We have one. Do we have, oh, Jacob just left. Okay, I will just start with the recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Hello, this is Austin AISD constituent Jolie Willis commenting on the item 3.2, consideration and possible approval of an order calling the tax ratification election. I encourage the Board to unanimously approve this order so that the district can maximize our funding and increase teacher pay. The legislature has not been willing to adequately fund our public schools, so it's incumbent that we do this ourselves through voter approval of a VADER on November 5th. Thank you for your consideration and have a great school year.
Hello, my name is Joshua Freeze. I spent my entire school career in AISD, primary and secondary, and although I don't have any kids of my own, I do owe AISD a great debt of gratitude for the education that I got, and it got me where I am today. So I would urge you to support the voter-approved tax ratification election this evening so other students can get the same benefit I did, and to support the staff and faculty who do the heavy lifting in the district here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Cruz, and I am a resident of Austin, living in the AISD taxing district. And while I don't have children, or children right now, I'm expecting and plan to send my child to AISD schools in the future. I'm calling in support of the voter-approved tax rate ratification election. I know that the state has made it difficult for the district, and I believe in strong investment in our teachers and school staff in order to build the public education that is going to take care of my child and my children and our children in the future. I can't express enough that the district should move forward with this election. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Iris Sutabe, and I'm a resident of Austin and proud supporter of Education Austin. I'm calling today to express my full support for the voter-approved tax ratification election. Our schools are the foundation of our community, and it is critical that we provide them with the necessary resources to continue offering high-quality education to all of our students. The VADER is not just an investment in our schools, it's an investment in the future of Austin. Supporting this measure means supporting the success of every student, every teacher, and every family in our district. I urge you to approve the VADER and give our schools the resources they need to thrive. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our community.
Hi, my name is Mike Conti. I'm a resident of Austin and a proud member of ASME 1624. I'm calling today in support of the VADER. As a public sector worker, I know how important this funding is to teachers, to school support staff, and to our public schools as institutions, and that every dime counts when it comes to building a world that allows students throughout the district to flourish and to be the future of our community. So I'm just calling to voice my very strong support for this item. Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Trish Nyslander, and I am City Vice President on the Executive Board of ASME 1624, and I was calling in support of the voter-approved tax ratification election, or VADER, as a stand in solidarity with our siblings in education, organized siblings in education, Education Austin. We believe that this tax rate increase is necessary to improve the quality of education for students and support the workers that provide that education. Thank you all very much, and please support the VADER. Good evening.
Okay, thank you. So this concludes our public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications?
Let's go.
And, okay, our trustees online, any questions or clarifications? Okay, so as a reminder to the public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So we've got our first action item tonight, which is the adoption of ordinances setting tax rates, the INS tax rate and MNO tax rate. So tonight, the Board is scheduled to approve our tax rate and potentially approve a VADER for the November election. As a reminder, the Board held a public hearing on the budget on June 20th, 2024, and approved the budget at the regular voting meeting following that hearing on the same day. Last Thursday, August 15th, the Board held a public hearing on the tax rate. So our first item tonight is the setting of the tax rate. So Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve item 3.1?
Yes, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 95.5 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, which is effectively an 8.3% increase to the tax rate. The adopted rate of .9505 represents an increase of .0910 cents from last year's total, of, sorry, 9.10 cents from last year's total tax rate. The adopted tax rate of .9505 will fund the 2024-2025 budget and reflects an 82.75 cents maintenance and operations tax rate and a 12.30 interest and sinking tax rate. The interest and sinking tax rate will be used for the purpose of providing a sinking fund, to be used to pay principal and interest on bonds issued or assumed by the district.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustees, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, so I did have a couple of questions. I just wanted to discern that this is not the actual calling for the tax rate election, that's the next voting item. So just wanted to make sure folks understood that. Is that correct?
There are two actions.
There's two actions, okay. Could you please explain why we are separating these into two different items? In case folks are wondering.
Thank you, trustees. So basically, you are doing two separate things. The Board is legally required to set a tax rate every year. It's something you'd be doing whether or not we were looking at a potential VADER election. So first, you're setting our tax rate. Because of the budget that you approved in June, that was set at a higher rate of revenue for the district, that necessitates you then approving a higher tax rate, which you're about to do. And then, once you do that, so you're setting a rate above what the voters have previously approved, you would then need to call an election to have the voters decide on that election.
Thank you for that clarification. And I also wanted to ask Superintendent or staff, can you please share with us what is it unique to AISD that we are voting on this item? Are there other school districts around central Texas that are also doing this?
Yes, President Singh, I can certainly speak to this. So there have been other school districts in central Texas that have pursued this type of, I guess, tax rate as it pertains to copper pennies. We presented that previously. We can certainly show to our community that we're not the first, but also kind of want to communicate to our community that there are many other urban school districts that have also taken advantage of this. And again, it is a tool that is made available to school districts. It is something that we have not used in the past, copper pennies. But yeah, that is what we're doing here.
Great, thank you. Trustees, any other questions or comments? Okay, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sapata to approve item 3.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And, okay, see Trustee Hunter, and then is Trustee Kaufman on Zoom? Okay, and I can't tell if he is voting or not.
President Singh?
Yes.
We need to do a roll call vote for this motion.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. So we'll start with Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Foster?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, I'll vote in favor.
Voting in favor.
Vote in favor.
In favor.
In favor. And Trustee Hunter?
In favor.
Okay, and Trustee Kaufman?
In favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Trustee Kaufman?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. So we have eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, eight trustees in favor and one abstention by Trustee Foster. So the motion passes again with eight in favor, zero opposed, and one abstaining. So thank you all. Next, we have consideration and possible approval of an order calling a tax ratification election to be held by Austin ISD on November 5th, 2024. Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve item 3.2?
Yes, I move that the Board approve item 3.2, consideration, and adopt an order calling a tax ratification election to be held by Austin ISD on November 5th, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustees, is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Vice President Foster?
I'm going to take an unpopular position on this item. I think it's well-known and well-understood that the state is sitting on a surplus right now that's rapidly approaching $40 billion. And even as the state sits on this surplus, it systematically starves public education. Moreover, it does so in a way that puts us in a position of going for these so-called copper pennies, or lead pennies, or whatever you want to call them, that are incredibly badly leveraged, so that as we know, for every dollar we raise in taxes, 75 cents of those dollars that are taken from our taxpayers will go back to the state. They will go to the state. So if, as anticipated, we raise 170 million new dollars, 130 million of those new dollars will go to the state, keep that surplus going, probably fund border walls and fund all sorts of things that we're not particularly interested in. The money that goes to school districts from the state is, for the most part, set with the reality of our basic allotment and then supplements. The only thing that changes is that with each new dollar we give the state, the state effectively buys down its own investment in public education. So when we vote for this tax rate election, what we are voting to do is to fill the coffers of the state to do things that don't serve us. And what we get in exchange is 25 cents on the dollar, which doesn't make a dent in our deficit and our budget shortfall. We are in an abusive relationship with the state, and when you are in an abusive relationship, at some point, you have to say no, and you have to stop. And saying no in the context of an abusive relationship is almost always incredibly painful. But at some point, it has to stop, and there is no indication that this is going to stop, that there is no indication that throwing a couple drops into a empty bucket is going to get us where we need to go. I deeply sympathize and understand why we would want the additional 20 million that would go to our budget, 21 or so that would go to our deficit. I get it. And at the end of the day, where I land morally is that I do not and cannot fill the coffers of people who do us harm, whether that harm is intended or not intended. But the harm is clear, the harm is ongoing. And so I find myself in a position that will not possibly be particularly popular, but I will sleep well making the vote because I see it as responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Foster. Any other trustees have comments? Yes, Secretary Boswell.
Trustee Foster, I appreciate your comments and really appreciate that we have all been able to have really open conversations about what is an incredibly difficult conversation, incredibly difficult situation. So thank you for sharing all of that. And I want to say I'll be voting in favor of this for a lot of the same reasons you're voting against it, that we have a state that is choosing to starve our public schools in a city that deeply values our public schools and that knows what they mean to change lives, to drive our economy, to build community. And I'm so proud of what we do here in Austin ISD. Rice University issued a study earlier this month that said 73% of districts in Texas are underfunded. I know trustees in those districts. There is another district in our area that's voting on golden pennies tonight for the same reason. We have neighbors here who have accessed their copper pennies, neighbors who also pay recapture, and schools around districts around the state that have been forced to do this. I'm proud of our advocacy in our community. I'm proud of the advocacy of trustees all across the state. I believe we will get to a better place because of the value that people around our state place on our public schools. They are the biggest employers in many of our communities. They do change lives, and they set our kids up for lifelong success, and they're the heart of our communities. So I, it is a difficult ask for our community, and I am convinced it is the right ask for our community, and I am excited for the opportunity to bring this to voters here in Austin ISD and help people choose to support us in a new way if they so choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Boswell. Anyone else? Yes, Trustee Kaufman.
Yes, and I would like to just ratify, since I was not on video, I just want to ratify that I did vote in favor of the previous one. That was me. And I also would like to thank Trustee Foster and Trustee Boswell for their comments. Similarly, like Trustee Boswell, I share many of the same sentiments that you voiced, but I also, like Secretary Boswell, will be voting in favor because of many of those same reasons. So I appreciate the way you framed that as well, Lynn. I began this journey towards this ratification election vote with very conflicted feelings for many of those same reasons, the concern about not putting additional funding into our schools when we have the opportunity, and also the concern about voting for a tax rate, much of the revenue from which will go to causes that may not be what our voters want to support. But I'm left with this being the only available option right now for increasing revenue for the district that's in the foreseeable future. And I have confidence that our district leadership and our financial team has managed our budget well. I have confidence that we're spending money responsibly in this district. I have confidence that we are doing our best to serve the community of Austin and to provide an education that our families want for their kids, which goes beyond the basics, but goes into many of the areas that we do invest in, like art, music, and athletics, and the things that our kids many times go to school for. And so I have confidence that this is a recommendation that's built upon some financial responsibility and a commitment to providing things for our kids. Since it is the only option available to us right now, I know we have people who are reaching out saying we need to fight back against recapture, we need to fight for different things, and I believe that we are fighting in the ways that we can. And I also do believe that this is, in many ways, a protest vote to say, this is what you've, this is where we are, is that this is the only way that we can increase revenues to provide for our students. I also have confidence that the balancing that's going to take place with cuts is going to be responsibly done, but also extremely painfully done, and people are going to feel those effects. And I have a hard time watching that pain that is going to be caused for our community and those kids who would be receiving those services that we may have to eliminate without doing what we can to increase revenue, to minimize those as best we can. But the most important point I want to make is that what I'm voting for today is for an election, right? So I personally am in favor of the tax rate increase, but what I'm voting for today is an election to allow our voters in Austin to make that decision. And I've heard from enough people who oppose, and I've heard from enough people who are in favor to tell me that this is something that is thankfully a direct vote of our community and not just the decision of nine people sitting up here on this dais. And so I feel very comfortable voting in favor of something that will put before our community a choice, which I am confident that they will make in favor of. But if they don't, then that tells us that's what our committee wants right now. And so, for those reasons, I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Trustee Kaufman. Anyone else? Yes, Trustee Lugo.
So thank you all for the comments that have already been made. There are a couple of things I wanted to kind of highlight. I absolutely agree that public education is in an abusive relationship in this state. And as a child who grew up in a family where there was abuse, my mom did what she had to do to keep us protected, to provide for us, and all the while, we still lived with that abuse. So much like Trustee Kaufman and Trustee Boswell, I'm also voting tonight in favor of calling for an election. And I also ask that all of those folks that are listening or reading about the VADER and who will ultimately vote for or against the VADER, get out the vote, show up to Legislative Advocacy Days, be as involved as you possibly can from where you are in your particular position in life, and help public education find freedom from the stranglehold of the state.
Thank you, Trustee Lugo. Trustee, what led you? Did you have a comment?
Yes. So, you know, Trustee Lugo and I are sending, she's sending multiple kids, we're both, but are, you know, we're sending first graders tomorrow who have gotten to meet their teacher, and they are so excited. And I think one of the best things about being in this position is I've really gotten to see how much all of Austin shows up for Austin ISD and for our kids and for our educators. You know, being a parent of young kids during the pandemic was extremely lonely, and coming into the school, coming into Austin as a parent and as a trustee, I just see how strong our community is. When I look at the callers, these are people who got their education here. These are folks who are future-oriented, who don't even have kids in the district yet, and they want this for our kids. And our children's future depends on this funding, and so I will be voting in favor. And I have faith in our community to show up for our kids like they have time and time again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Singh, and thank you all for sharing your comments. I think for the reasons that Trustee Boswell shared, like, the discussion around this vote is particularly important because what's happening to our district is happening to districts all across the state of Texas. And it's happening because our state leaders have chosen to make greed and priorities for their base of utmost importance beyond what are the essential contributions of the people that comprise our public school system. And we have a problem, and we are at the very tip of that problem in this district, and this is a seminal hour for us. It is not lost on me, the gravity of the decision that we're making. Most Americans don't have more than $500 put away in case of an emergency, and so as small of an increase as we're talking about, that's still a serious ask. And I went into the last legislative session in earnest, thinking that a deal could have been struck and that we could avert the very serious cuts that we are faced with today. And I cannot believe it, quite frankly, how far apart we are from our state leaders when it comes to properly funding public education. I am shocked by the way that the people that lead our state are treating us. I am. They plead poverty, and yet, at the same time, they're willing to make the types of investments that Trustee Foster pointed out. They're willing to give away, at this point, billions to a voucher scheme that has no evidence of working anywhere in the country. It is disgusting. Shame on them, truly. And at some point, the jig is up, right? We cannot continue to be dwindled and marginalized and disrespected and dishonored. The entire educational model has been changed within recent history, and we cannot expect that the funding model should not change with that. Otherwise, we're just going to be starved to death. And so if we don't make this decision to put this to voters tonight, then we are going to be in even deeper trouble than we already are. And so I understand the points that have been made on the other side of this, but for those reasons, I will also be voting to support this VADER tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Any other trustees? Yes, Trustee Sapata.
I don't have much more to add, since everyone said it very clearly, the importance of this vote tonight, but I will be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if Trustee Hunter is still on Zoom, and I just want to offer an opportunity if Trustee Hunter wanted to say anything.
I do, I don't know, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, thank you. What I would like to add is that I have really thought about how this will affect our community. I have a 75-year-old mother who lives in retirement, who struggles to pay the taxes that she has. But she, in our conversation, said, "If a little bit more will help, then I can do that." And for me, what this vote is, is just the ask. Every citizen who is a voter has the right to say, "Yes, I'm willing to do this," or "I don't see how I can possibly support this at this time." And so I will vote in favor for the ask. For all the other reasons that my colleagues have stated, yes. I wish we were somewhere different. I wish it was some kind of magic wand we could wave, but we don't. And this is our last-ditch effort until somebody stands up and does what's right for public education, and right now, it doesn't seem to be our legislature or our state leaders. And so, as Trustee Lugo said, continue to support that legislative change, and we will do what we have to do in the meantime, just like every other family in America does what they have to do to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, so I just have a couple of comments. Thank you to all the trustees for sharing from the heart, you know, how, you know, an explanation of why or why not you're going to be supporting this. And I respect everyone's viewpoint. Trustee Lugo, thank you for sharing what you shared. You know, I'll just kind of share. If I felt like voting no on this would make any difference at the state level, then maybe I would vote no on this. But it's not going to make a difference. And when I think about the first day of school being tomorrow, how excited my kids are, how excited your kids are. And I think about the scorecard that we just passed that has so many high expectations for student outcomes with reading, with algebra in middle school, with graduating, with industry certifications, and going to college and taking advantage of all the post-secondary options available to us, to our students, treating our teachers with respect and ensuring that they have the tools that they need to take care of our children. And in this role as a trustee, that is the only lens I am looking at is what's going to get us from point A to point B. And I know we can't do that with the current level of funding. And so I will be supporting this as well. And I do hope that our voters out there do that. And I feel like it's going to be extra important for all of us to be advocating this legislative session in the areas that are appropriate to ensure that our schools get fully funded. Two things can happen at the same time. We can support the VADER and support more funding for public schools in general. I also wanted to note that I believe with this VADER, it would bring in about $550 per student. Is that correct? That will make a, that can make a big difference in a child's education. The other thing I want to point out is bringing this to the voters is asking a lot, and it's not a decision we made lightly. And I want to make crystal clear that our administration is, and our board, is committed, absolutely committed, to making cuts as well. We're not putting, we're not going to just continue business as usual and expect taxpayers to lift all the burden. In fact, for every dollar that we would bring in, in this VADER, we're actually committing to cutting at least $2. Okay, so that's a really important piece of information. I want to make sure people understand. So I really, I respect all the opinions shared tonight, and I'll be supporting this. So, any other comments or questions? All right. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sepata to approve item 3.2, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, and those opposed? All right, and abstaining, no abstentions? Okay, so the motion passes with eight in favor, one opposed, and zero abstaining. So thank you all very much. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sepata to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 6:21 PM. Thank you all. And happy first day of school.